Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting of December 14th, 2015. Mrs. Bonifield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Present.
Mrs. Bonifield is here. President Burton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you are here in the room this evening and you would like to have an agenda to follow along, the agendas are just outside the door. Feel free to help yourself. If you're watching from home and you'd like to follow along with an agenda, you can find it on our website. That can be found at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab and drop down, you can find an agenda and follow along. This evening's meeting is a regular meeting, or as some folks refer to as a voting meeting. The items that are coming before the Board tonight for a vote have typically been talked about, at least at a study session and a committee of the whole. One very important item on our agenda has been talked about since last June. So you may or may not see the amount of conversation that you might expect on certain items. Please be assured that it's not because they are not being discussed or studied in detail, but it's because these items have been typically talked about. This is the third time around now. So if you would really like to see more discussion, more back and forth and detail about the work of the Board, I do encourage you to follow along with our Committee of the Whole meetings. Those are found on our website, again, under the School Board tab. At our Committee of the Whole, that is when we do a whole lot of discussion back and forth. We may send items back to the administration for more questions and answers and so forth, but there's a lot of discussion before it comes to this meeting. So I do encourage you to follow along at some of those meetings also. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Bonifield, would you please lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say thank you for joining us this evening. In anticipation of this evening, we were hoping that a lot of folks would turn out. We have two very exciting items on our agenda amongst the regular business of our Board. We're going to have a presentation by the art students from Churchill High School, which we are thrilled about. It's exciting to bring our students in and see some of their work and have them come forth personally to receive some honors. And of course, we're also going to be voting in our superintendent this evening, which thrills my soul. Nothing scares a Board of Education more than hearing that your superintendent is going to go elsewhere, and it's then the School Board's job to hire a new superintendent. But without jumping too far into that, we are thrilled to pieces that you chose to be with us this evening. Next item on our agenda is Item 3, Communications, and 3A is Art Students. Mrs. Jenkins, would you introduce this for us, please?
Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Mrs. Oakwist, soon-to-be Superintendent Oakwist. Tonight, we are continuing on with our Student Art Gallery program, in which we recognize the artistic talents of our students on a monthly basis. As you can see from the works that are on display behind you, we once again have some very talented students we are recognizing this evening. Featured this month are the works of five Churchill High School students who were selected by our teacher Tracy Altman, who is with us this evening. I believe, hello? Well, thanks for joining us. And also, we have Janet Stack, who is the district's art department chair. Mrs. Stack is in the back there. Oh, okay. Thanks for joining us. Let's see, each student will receive a certificate this evening. And I wanted to mention that these five students were selected from approximately 250 art students at Churchill High School between nine art classes. So this is quite an honor. Each student will receive this certificate, which reads "Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery Featured Artist Selected to Represent the Churchill High School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, December 14th, 2015." Okay, and without further ado, I'd love to introduce you to our five artists this evening. First, we have Elena Cunningham, who is a freshman, and she is in the Beginning Painting class at Churchill. We could have Elena join us at the podium here.
Either way.
Mine's the middle top one with the skulls.
Okay, and what type of art is that?
Acrylic paint.
Okay, very nice.
Very, very cool.
Okay. Let's get, we can give these to each other. Caroline is a 12th grader who is in Advanced Drawing. There you are, Caroline. And which piece is yours?
Mine's the top right of the deer skull, and it's made of charcoal. And in all honesty, I really hate still lifes, but as I was drawing it, I came to love it, so.
Next, we have Mary Hodges, who is also a 12th grader, and she is in Beginning Painting. There you are, Mary. Congratulations.
My painting is the blue frog in the bottom.
And that does not look like a Beginning Painting student to me. That's amazing.
Very nice.
Next, we have Autumn Seigh, and Autumn is a 10th grade student who is in Beginning Drawing, and I'm not sure Autumn was able to join us.
Yes, she's here.
Autumn is here. Excellent. Come on up, Autumn. Here's your certificate. Congratulations. And which piece is yours?
Mine is the bottom left.
Okay.
It is the self portrait.
Self portrait. We could guess that in a heartbeat. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And last but not least, we have Veronica Shoemaker, who is a senior, also in Beginning Painting. Veronica?
Actually, Advanced Drawing.
Oh, Advanced Drawing.
Advanced Photography, sorry.
Oh, okay. Yes, we do have a photograph up here.
I have you down for painting for some reason.
It's all right, I painted. Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you. It's the top left of the artist painting the landscape.
Very neat. Very cool. I'd also like to give a shout-out to students from Riley Upper Elementary and Garfield Elementary. A couple of classes' worth of art is on display in our Board Office lobby as well for the month of December. So congratulations to those students, and please join me again in congratulating our five students who are with us this evening. Thank you for sharing your work with us. I promise I'll return the pieces in good shape. Thank you.
And as we've said before, most of us couldn't even begin to do some of the work that we've got behind us, and we are just so appreciative, and thank you for sharing your work with us, because it sure beats the heck out of a boring beige background. It's a lot nicer to look at. When we take a break in a few moments, artists, if you and your families would like to take any pictures up near the board table with your art, you can feel free to do so. We'll be taking a break for that kind of thing in just a few minutes. The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, Appointment of Superintendent. May I have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Mrs. Laura.
I'm honored and very excited, like the rest of my colleagues, to present this motion. So with that being said, move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution to appoint Andrea Oakwist as Superintendent of Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonifield. We have several folks who would like to speak to this very exciting item this evening. I'm going to begin by giving a brief update, because several folks who are in our audience, in our room tonight or at home, haven't been following it along quite as closely as we have. But the process from last summer to date is as follows. After many, many years of loyal service to Livonia Public Schools, last summer, Dr. Randy Leopel left to take the position of Superintendent of the Wayne County RISA. So he is now over 33 school districts, including Livonia. So we get to share his expertise with not only the children in our county, but I believe the children in the state of Michigan, and we are forever grateful for his service. If Dr. Leopel is in our audience this evening, if we could take a moment of appreciation for Dr. Leopel. The Board takes this role very, very seriously. There are really only about three roles that are significantly the Board of Education's and nobody else's, and one of those three is hire and evaluate the superintendent. Because we do take this very seriously, and we have seven folks before you who have a lot of School Board experience, none of us had hiring the superintendent experience. So we decided very quickly to utilize a search firm to assist us through this process. The School Board interviewed six different search firms and hired Michigan Leadership Institute with Mike Wilmot, Bill Weber, and Tim Quinn to assist us through the whole process. And Bill Weber is with us this evening and will be speaking to us shortly. The MLI had a meeting with the Board of Education. We developed a calendar for our target dates. And MLI then met with not only the Board of Education, but several different focus groups and community groups to develop a profile on exactly what we're looking for in a superintendent. Additionally, we posted a "Talk to Us" button, so that if there was anyone in the community who wishes to weigh in on what they're looking for in a superintendent, they have the opportunity to do so. The job was posted, and we took applications through August of last summer. We had said all along, and MLI encouraged us to do so, that if we get the desired candidates, we're going to continue, and if we don't get the desired candidates, we're going to start over. We interviewed four of the applicants in September, and the Board decided that we were potentially interested in one of those four for a second interview, but we wanted a larger pool of candidates from which to choose. We decided to repost the job this December, January, which is a more traditional time to look for a superintendent. From September through November, MLI, Michigan Leadership Institute, continued their work, even though the Board kind of put it on a back burner. They were continuing to look at superintendents throughout the state of Michigan and prepared to bring forward those that they thought were most fitting for Livonia Public Schools. In the end of November, before we decided to go ahead and post the position again, MLI encouraged us to make sure that we didn't have an internal candidate that the Board was interested in and who may be interested in the position. The Board all along had been interested in one individual, and that is Andrea Oakwist. In our November study session meeting, we asked Andrea if she would reconsider her initial decision to serve only as an interim superintendent, and thrilled the Board to pieces, because she said she would reconsider that decision. At our Committee of the Whole meeting last week, we had a lengthy discussion amongst the Board, Mike Wilmot, and Bill Weber, and Andrea Oakwist. The Board reached consensus pretty quickly that we were all ready to go forward and take a step in voting on Andrea Oakwist as our superintendent today. At this time, I'd like to invite Bill Weber from Michigan Leadership Institute to the podium. Bill has some comments that he'd like to share with us regarding our search process.
Thank you very much, President Burton. What a wonderful evening.
Absolutely.
On behalf of Michigan Leadership Institute, we do want to extend our appreciation and thanks to the Board for allowing us to be part of this process. We work with many, many Boards, and this has just been an outstanding process for all of us. So thank you so much. As was pointed out, there was some concern early on that when Dr. Leopel was leaving, that the fall of the year is not always the most advantageous time to try to select a superintendent. But because of the reputation that this school district has, not only throughout the state of Michigan, but nationally, that we felt that it was certainly within the purview of the Board to go out and try to get candidates. And we had some really outstanding candidates that did apply, knowing full well that there was always a possibility that it wouldn't come to fruition. One of the important things that we did, and it's already been mentioned, is that we held forums. And those forums that we held were with community members, with staff, with parents, with students, and with the Board. And all during that time, we were trying to develop a profile of what it is that the community wanted to see. Well, they began by wanting to see a clone of Dr. Leopel. So once we got past that part, that it wasn't going to happen, and nobody would want a clone of Dr. Leopel, we then began to ferret out what was really being said. And the positive things we were hearing almost led us to the direction of Andrea. So many of the accolades about the district and the way people are treated in the district, you know, we thought to ourselves, why are we doing this, when it was obvious to us that so many people that we were talking to already had determination made? I think in addition to the discussions that the Board had with Andrea in late November, I think Dr. Wilmot and I had a number of them also, all during the process, saying, Andrea, you can do this, and it's possible. Well, she had a four-month interview process as the interim superintendent, and I couldn't be more pleased, and I think the community couldn't be more pleased with the outcome. So thank you very much.
We've had one point person from our administration who's been assisting the Board throughout the entire process, and that is our Director of Human Resources Dana Wintery. Dana, would you like to approach the podium and give your thoughts on the process from the summer to now?
As the Director for Human Resources, I'd like to affirm that an appropriate selection process has been conducted, and with the guidance of Dr. Weber, Dr. Wilmot, and the Michigan Leadership Institute, the Board has been through a very thorough and professional recruitment process. Also, in my role of Director of Human Resources, I'd like to affirm that Andrea Oakwist meets and exceeds the qualifications for the superintendent vacancy. Her education, experience, and skills make her an outstanding candidate for our position, but more importantly, I believe that it makes her a uniquely qualified candidate and the very best one. Mrs. Oakwist has been extremely well-received by the employees and the public as our interim superintendent, and would be extremely well-received as our permanent superintendent. In fact, a combination of calm and excitement befell the employees when it became public that the Board was interested in Mrs. Oakwist taking the position, and that she was willing to take on the role in a more permanent capacity. And as you know, many parents and members of our community have come forward to express their excitement over her candidacy. We, who have worked with Andrea for a long time, know her to be an expert in the field of education, held in esteem by her professional colleagues. She's extremely hardworking, thorough, analytical, and strategic, very knowledgeable of the district and its policies, procedures, and practices, a very quick learner, forward-thinking, unafraid to take on problems and challenges, always willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done, a great source of institutional memory, loyal, supportive, a good listener, even-tempered, and even-unflappable, fair, compassionate, and most importantly, a leader. In summary, I don't think that there's a candidate who will possess a background, qualifications, and skill set that most more closely correspond to the district's needs at this time, at this particular point in history. Frankly, Mrs. Oakwist would be a formidable, and I believe, successful candidate if she were to express interest in other superintendent vacancies. Fortunately for us, she loves the Livonia Public Schools School District, where she has spent her entire career. I know of no candidate who would command more respect coming into this role than Mrs. Oakwist. She's had the respect of our parents and educational community, our teachers, general employees, administration, and cabinet, long before accepting the role as interim superintendent, and that respect has only grown over the last four months as we have continued to move forward. On behalf of the many employees that I've spoken to, including, if not especially, my colleagues on the Cabinet, I want to let the Board know that we would welcome Mrs. Oakwist, and frankly, be thrilled to death to have her as our new superintendent. I wholeheartedly recommend the appointment of Andrea Oakwist to the Board as superintendent, and thank you for giving me a moment to talk.
Thank you. At this time, it is time for the Board to have a discussion of Mrs. Oakwist and her candidacy. You don't need to look nervous. For those of you who followed along with us at our last meeting, it may be a bit repetitive, but these things do warrant being said again. Because this is such an important responsibility of the Board of Education, I would ask that each one of our Board members give their thoughts on this issue, as we did at our last meeting. And who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. I would like to thank Mrs. Oakwist for putting herself out there, because I know from the very get-go, she really did not want to do this. I mean, that's what she kept saying, "No, I only want to do it temporarily." And as she became more comfortable, and you could see her grow into this position, and I'm very happy to have you here, Mrs. Oakwist. I've gotten a lot of positive response from friends who still have children, or just in the community, that are very appreciative that you are taking on this position. And I know you're doing an excellent job. Your communication skills, you're not afraid to take on any challenges. I'm just very happy for you to be here, and congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McDonald. Who would like to speak next? Mr. Centers.
So I have to say, no less than probably eight people have come up to me and said, "You know, this whole Andrea being superintendent thing, that was my idea." I'm not kidding. And I hate to burst everyone's bubble, but it was actually my idea. No, but if you look, everyone who's at home can't see this overwhelming response from around the district. How many people are excited for you to be our superintendent? You know, 1,000 staff, 15,000 kids, that's a responsibility that could burden a lot of people and overwhelm a lot of people, and you jumped in, and it was like you had been there for years. This is going to be a great change going forward. It's not much of a change, because you've been here all along. So I'm very excited, and you know, I thank you for coming forward and doing this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. Echoing what my colleagues have said, firstly, if you're watching from home, you're missing what I'm looking at here. I have never seen this room so full. I feel like a minister on Christmas Day. Where are you guys the rest of the year? And I have to relate a story. I had an opportunity recently, along with Mrs. Oakwist, to host the president of Michigan PTA and a representative from National PTA who was interested in visiting Livonia Public Schools, because she had heard how great our district was. And in the course of doing this tour, we went through several of our buildings and met several of our students and staff members. And Mrs. Oakwist leaned over to me, and she was so full with emotion, she said, "I have passion for this district that goes all the way to my toes. She lives that every day, and I have to say, that makes you uniquely qualified for this role. It's your toes." So thank you. Thank you for bringing your toes to the Board.
Mrs. Bonifield.
I just want to thank Mrs. Oakwist for doing this. I know it's a sacrifice on the part of, you know, with her family, but we have known Mrs. Oakwist for many, many years, and it's no surprise that she's moving into the seat that she's moving into, and I couldn't be happier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonifield. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. I could spend the better part of an hour or more telling you why I'm thankful, and I'm just going to thank one person, and that's Santa Claus, because he brought my present early.
Thank you, President Burton. What's there left to say? I could really echo all the wonderful things that have been said, and that's so very true of Mrs. Oakwist, but I think I just want to point out this evening that Mrs. Oakwist is by far one of the most admired and respected individuals in our community. I've been around for a little while, and I've had the opportunity to meet a number of outstanding community leaders and dignitaries, and I can honestly say that I can't think of another person who is so well thought of and respected by our city. And I believe, all the great qualities that she has, it's also due to her utmost integrity and her genuine caring about people, and what's best not only for our school district, but our city as well. Since the School Board began its search, we developed a list of really pretty strenuous qualities, but we kept on going back to one thing in common, and we were looking for somebody that would fit our district. And you probably heard us saying, if you followed along with us that many times, "Well, we all really believe we found the best person that fits our district, and I don't think we'd ever find a better person." I know that everybody agrees. Mrs. Oakwist has that history with Livonia, as you've heard. She loves our district and our city, and she truly understands it and knows it. So as I said when I presented the motion, I'm honored, and we're all excited about appointing Mrs. Oakwist as the leader of Livonia School District. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. I get to go last, and I will echo everything that's been said so far in the room. There are some very significant responsibilities and qualifications that a superintendent has to have. They have to thoroughly understand education and education as it is in the state of Michigan, which clearly Mrs. Oakwist does, starting from before being a teacher in Livonia Public Schools. The superintendent has to understand, unfortunately, in this last decade, how to navigate the legislative process for the betterment of the public school district, because it's a battle on a daily or weekly basis to make sure we have adequate funding and adequate legislation. Mrs. Oakwist quickly learned that she's better at that than she thought she was going to be. It's a matter of taking those details and boiling them down and presenting them to folks who may or may not have any background in education, and making it understandable quickly, and getting across the point of what do we need for our education system to function well. A business and financial understanding is necessary for a superintendent. And with Andrea Oakwist's background in Cabinet and the many years she's spent in that position, that too has come very quickly to Andrea Oakwist. It's an area that Dr. Leopel was uniquely qualified in, because his background had come initially from a financial background, but when you're on Cabinet, when you're in part of every decision that goes down with the district, that information comes through quickly, and as it's been said, Andrea is a quick learner. And starting as a teacher, she has picked up the business and financial aspect of the job really, really well. And as Mrs. Laura and others have said tonight, understanding the culture of Livonia Public Schools is also paramount. That was just as important to the Board as all of the other day-to-day activities. We needed someone who could come in here and not change our district to make it their own, but come in and embrace the district that we have. And I don't know if I know anybody who embraces our district as much as Andrea Oakwist does. At this time, I'd like to invite Andrea to join me at the podium. Mrs. Jenkins, there was a folder here that's moved. It's beige.
Did you change your mind?
I'm going to get my copy. Just hang tight for a moment. Just want to make us a little nervous there, huh?
Everybody breathe.
Yes, yeah, wing it. Yeah, we would wing it, uh-huh. You know, I am thrilled. Thrilled to pieces. I'm going to just not even try to duplicate what's already I'm going to just not even try to duplicate what's already been said. I'm going to read the resolutions that's before us this evening. And afterward, the Board's going to have a housekeeping issue of officially taking the vote on this item. Whereas, the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District has engaged in a comprehensive search for an outstanding school leader to fill the vacant position of superintendent of schools. And whereas, the Board of Education has determined, through the aforementioned search process and by means of the district's direct experience over the last four months, that Andrea Oquist is the type of leader the Livonia Public Schools School District seeks. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby designate Andrea Oquist as its choice to become superintendent of schools, contingent upon the successful negotiation of an employment agreement. The effective date of the appointment is to be determined through the aforementioned negotiation process. Be it further resolved that the president of the Board of Education is hereby authorized to negotiate said employment agreement with Mrs. Oquist on behalf of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, and to bring forward to the full Board of Education the complete employment agreement for final approval at the earliest possible time, thus ending the superintendent's search process. Yay. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education expresses its sincere appreciation to Michigan Leadership Institute for their thorough and professional guidance throughout this very important superintendent's search process. And I have the first gift to you as our official superintendent, and that is from the Board of Education. This plaque can go on your desk, or your kitchen counter, wherever you'd like it to go.
I'll keep it here.
Yeah, it's probably best here. It reads Andrea L. Oquist, Superintendent.
Thank you.
If you'll indulge the Board a moment, we do have one housekeeping item, and we do have to officially take a vote on this. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Yes, I will. Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
And President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a new superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now, it's your turn.
Okay. I hope I am relatively brief in comparison to my normal sharing. Thank you so very much. I am truly filled with gratitude to each of you on our Board of Education for the sentiments you've shared this evening and throughout this process. I know how seriously you took this and this role that you have, and I am so grateful for your confidence. As the 10th superintendent of our district, I know the strong foundation that has been laid before us, is one that has been filled with care and commitment for children, for staff, and for our families. I thank all who have served in this role before me, but more about that in a minute. First, I would like to introduce my family to you. They are the most amazing group of people I know, and the reason that I am confidently able to take on this role. My parents, George and Eunice Bagarres, please stand up. Both. You may not know, they are both longtime members, now retired, of LPS staff. They are proud lifetime residents of Livonia, and they are the greatest example of family-first that anyone could ever have. And two of our regular board meeting viewers, so you'll be happy to know, our viewership is raised each week, because they're always tuned in. And I usually get a feedback text from Mom at the end of the... If you think I'm kidding, I'm not. My wonderful husband, Jeff, who is the best partner I could ask for. He is truly one amazing guy. We love raising our children together. Our daughter, Olivia, who is taking her finals this week at college and could not be here, so you go, girl. We've got your back. She is on the way to join the greatest profession on earth, teaching, and I know there will be hundreds of students in the future who will be blessed to call her their teacher. And our son, Alex, please stand up. Alex, you have such a great combination of a wonderful heart and a wonderful mind, with a work ethic that wows us each and every day. I am an unabashedly proud hockey mom, and Alex will sometimes introduce himself that he's number 21 on the ice and number one in our hearts. And what an amazing surprise to have just the greatest group of guys and coaches here this evening. SHS Hockey, a big shout-out to all of you. I love you too. I'm feeling a little pressure on the snow day front right now. I'm also so happy to have here with me this evening my two sisters and brothers-in-law, my sister Sabrina and her husband Joe, my sister Allison and her husband Nick. You are both role models to me, and I could not be more grateful for your unwavering love and support. Our family is abundantly blessed. I'd like to acknowledge three leaders who believed in me along the way and hired me for each of my previous roles. Some of you may remember Mr. Jim Lauer. He was my first principal and mentor, and he hired me as a teacher and gave me a start in this district. I will be forever indebted to him. Dr. Ken Watson had the faith to hire me as a principal when I was 26-years-old, and gave me the opportunity to learn and lead with some of the most amazing teachers you would have ever met and principal colleagues for 16 years. I loved being an elementary principal. And special thanks to Dr. Randy Leepa, who is here with us this evening. Would you stand, please? He asked me to come and join Central Office as part of his cabinet six years ago. We had just an amazing... I had an amazing opportunity to learn from him and to watch him lead in a way. His contributions and advocacy on behalf of our district are nothing short of remarkable. I am truly grateful and humbled by the staff and community support who have come here this evening. That means the world to me. And for all of our LPS students who are here this evening, you are the reason I am taking on this role. We have the best kids here in this district. I love watching them excel. I was at... On Friday evening at the inauguration, and our Stevenson Coral Students, the Coral Group... I'm drawing a blank on the name. The Village thingers, thank you for filling in. The Village, they did such a beautiful job, and literally, I felt like their mom. I was so proud of them. And I wish I could name literally every secretary, custodian, paraprofessional driver, administrative colleague, PTA parent that I've worked with. You have been a blessing in my life, and I am forever grateful that our paths have crossed. Finally, thank you to our bright and talented cabinet, to Jill Wozniak, who embarked on this journey with me, along with our ALT team, so many of who are here this evening. There is no one I would rather partner with as we move forward toward the bright future ahead of us. Livonia Public Schools is an extraordinary district. Our people make us who we are. We have a shared vision of excellence that we work toward each day. It requires tenacity and grit, and a belief in ourselves and one another. Thank you for your belief in me. I could not be more proud to lead our district. Thank you for being here tonight. It means world to me.
Sometimes it's a five or 10-minute break. I think tonight it might be a little longer. We're going to take a brief recess, so that those in attendance this evening can congratulate our honorees this evening, our Churchill Art Students, their our teachers, and our new superintendent, Andrea Oquist. We are at recess. We will resume in probably 15 minutes, give or take. Welcome back to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education meeting of December 14, 2015. The next item on our agenda is Item 3C, Written Communications. Does any board member have written communications that they would like to share with the Board? Nope? All right. The next item on the agenda is 3D Audience Communications. This is a time that the Board of Education sets aside for the Board to listen to members of the public. There is a time limit of three minutes per board member, and we do request that each speaker honor that, so that everyone has a fair opportunity to be heard. A couple of meetings ago, we began giving a little bit of background on audience communication, so that everyone understands a little bit more clearly what the Board is doing during this time period. There are three primary roles of the Board of Education. The first is to set policy for the district. The second is to hire and evaluate our superintendent. As you could tell by the activity earlier in the meeting, we are thrilled to have done that this evening. The third role of the Board of Education is to set strategic goals and match the budget to those goals for the district. These are the three exclusive roles of the Board of Education. The role of all the day-to-day operations of the district are assigned to the superintendent and the staff that follow the superintendent. The superintendent does have the ultimately authority over the running of the day-to-day operations of the district. Therefore, on operations where the Board of Education is being asked to take an active role in the day-to-day operations, in accordance with district policy and with state law, the Board will refer those items to the superintendent. In response, it's the role of the Board of Education to evaluate the superintendent in the carrying out of those and the other duties that are his or hers. I do have, it looks like about five folks who would like to address the Board this evening. The first is John Stewart.
Thank you. My name is John Stewart, former state representative who represented the Livonia School District. I, of course, would like to thank and congratulate Andrea Oquist, our superintendent, tonight. This has been such a positive meeting. It's a school board member's dream. You have a piece of paper in front of you. I have attended five state school board meetings in the past year, and I have attended that list of school boards. Starting here with thanking Dr. Leepa on June 22, Taylor, Grand Rapids, Lansing, Wyandotte, Kalamazoo, South Lyon, Woodhaven, Brownstown, Eastern Michigan Regents, twice, Novi is coming up, and Warren. The Kalamazoo District named Dr. Michael Rice Superintendent of the Year. That is my fondest wish for you to be named the Superintendent of the Year of all public schools in Michigan, Ms. Oquist. I was there November 5. Kalamazoo has the Kalamazoo promise. Kalamazoo has layers of mentoring. Kalamazoo has intensive collaboration with the College of Education at Western Michigan University. While in the state legislature, I was Chair of Higher Education, and I'm on the Appropriations Committee for six years. A little tip, a former teacher, Martha Mobile... The Martha Mobile is on autopilot to and from Lansing. I go to Lansing at least once or twice a month, but I do not drive. It's Martha Trafford who drives. The South Lyon School District, and the point that's relevant to you and every one of us here tonight. I appear in front of the South Lyon School District where my uncle... By the way, three of my uncles were superintendents of school districts for more than 14 years, South Lyon, Rochester, and Mason. I come from a public school family. I'm the only lawyer in the family. The South Lyon School District quickly said to me, and the school board said, "We have three school board members out of seven who are graduates of K-12 Livonia Public Schools." The superintendent informs me that she was trained and hired by Sheila Alice. Will you please kindly document the outgrowth that has originated here, and what you have done and contributed all across the state of Michigan, with South Lyon being one? And, Miss Laura, I want to keep you smiling, because a gentleman, a young man, said to me, "I understand you work out with Miss Laura at the Livonia Y." Well, I'm right next door, and I am the principal of the Frost Middle School. I'm like, "Okay, Mr. Abate." There is a wonderful, rich tradition, and the lessons that have been learned here, K-12. We all know that public education is the foundation of our democracy and the cornerstone of our society. Dr. Leepa and I have spoken before many groups of numbers of luncheons of over 200 retired teachers, where we said, "Stop raiding the school aid fund," and restore accountability and oversight of all of our charter and cyber schools. I have no talent for humor, or even lightheartedness. What do you expect from a Dutch, Scottish Presbyterian lawyer? But on page 369, I...
Mr. Stewart?
We need to help keep Martha Trafford down on the farm. She started dictating to me about Chapter 1 and a new book. She started in kindergarten.
Mr. Stewart?
Totally unaware...
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
This is my last comment. She started in kindergarten, totally unaware that she would be superintendent of the Livonia Public School System. I think Martha is ready to start writing the book on the profiling courage of Andrea Oquist. And here is her picture on page 359.
Thank you so much for sharing this evening. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Liz Evans.
My name's Liz Evans. I work for the American Cancer Society. I work on the Relay for Life event in Livonia and other surrounding communities. This is my fifth season in the Livonia community, and we just bought a house here. I came today to present an award to the school district for amazing achievement and contributions to the American Cancer Society. Since I've been here over the past four years, going on five, the schools, Riley, Johnson, Stevenson, all the high schools, have contributed to the fight against cancer and have raised over $30,000.
Wow.
I just wanted to thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the work you do on behalf of the American Cancer Society. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Jennifer Anderszak, and I apologize, because I know I'm not pronouncing it properly. I'm coming closer.
No problem. Yep. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Anderszak. I attended the committee meeting on December 7, and I listened to the Board list reasons why they should not combine the ASD and ECP programs at Jackson Early Childhood Center. As the parent of an ECP student that was moved from Perrinville to Jackson, I agree with those reasons and more, as I've pointed out to the Board in the past. I'm disappointed with the renovations made at Jackson prior to the ECP move. I'm very disappointed with the building that houses Livonia's youngest students. Last Thursday, President Barack Obama signed a new education law to ensure educational opportunity for every student, including early childhood education. The President acknowledged that the early years can make a huge difference in a child's life. My hope is that the new year will bring positive changes for early childhood education in Livonia. I hope that the new leadership in Livonia, our new mayor and new superintendent, realize the importance of early childhood education, not only the special education programs, but also the infant, toddler, and preschool programs offered in Livonia currently housed at Jackson. Jackson Early Childhood Center is Livonia Public Schools' first chance to impress the parents of infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. The teachers and programs present are exemplary, but is that building the best Livonia has to offer its younger students? I would like to see the early childhood programs receive the same attention given to the K-12 schools recently. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Gursbeck.
Thank you, President Burton, members of the Board. Madam Superintendent, Oquist, I congratulate you. You know, as an outsider of the process, I want... I do know Andrea very well. She works very well with our legislators in Lansing, and I know that over the last few months that you've been... few months that you've been the temporary superintendent. You've done a great job, as was evident when I met with you the other day on behalf of the PTA Council, and I thank you for doing that. We got a chance, and I know it's a very difficult process right now, as an outsider, I watched those meetings, for you to find a permanent superintendent. And she has done a great job interviewing over the last three or four months, correct me if I'm wrong, and wow, people have come to me in every level, in the elementary process, secondary, in every level, including the city and the schools, by the way, and say, "Wow, she'll have great relationships with us. She's going to build on Dr. Leopha's good record," and she's not happy with the status quo. In fact, she wants to grow it and make it bigger, and make everything we do better. And on behalf of future parents and parents that have young children in the district, I thank you for that. I think that's very important. So I just wanted, again, to say congratulations, and I also want to say thank you to the school board for all they do, and I want to thank you for the work that, I know that was very difficult, in a very difficult budget time, to work with them, or to work with each other in hiring a superintendent with our firm that you hired before in an open process, and I look forward to seeing the policies and the goals that you set in the next coming year. And I know there'll be some opportunities to work with you on that, and anything indirectly or directly, I will be happy to do that and intend to do that, to make this board and this district a better place. Thank you very much, and again, congratulations.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Eileen Brandt. Eileen?
I want to be respectful of time, so I'm just going to read my statement.
Okay.
I usually like to come to the Livonia Board of Education with good news. I like to highlight the good things that are happening in the Livonia Public School District and those who are making it happen. Today, however, I'm coming before you to express my extreme disappointment. As a parent and an educational advocate, I'm exposed to the good, the bad, and the very, very ugly. The trend that I have to talk about tonight is the fact that Livonia is not living up to its self-proclaimed status of a lighthouse district. Students receiving special education in Livonia are treated like second-class citizens. When it comes to funding or consideration of resources, special education seems to always be the lowest on the list of priorities. Instead of looking at the whole student when they're first being placed in school, students are often routed to the most restrictive setting. Students in special education are first and foremost general education students. They just happen to need extra support to access the general education curriculum. There is often not a plan as to how a student will exit out of the most restricted center programs and re-enter a less restrictive environment. Research has proven time and again that students with IEPs, Individualized Educational Programs, and students without IEPs both benefit from learning together. The gains made in the general education settings are great for both populations. In addition, the students without IEPs are the future employers and peers for students with IEPs. When we keep these populations separate, we hurt them both. Center programs that are housed in general education buildings are for integration purposes, are often hidden in the back corners of the building. One example I'd like to highlight is F-Hall at Churchill. Students in the cross-categorical center program are kept back in a hall that is completely separate from other Churchill students. These rooms that are there without outside windows, and students are expected to stay in them entering their entire school day. They switch between rooms that are directly next to each other, thereby losing any chance for a natural movement break that passing time allows. What other population of students would we allow this to happen to? Many buildings throughout Livonia have special education buses, pick up and drop off at a separate location in the building, usually outback, than the regular education buses. Some would say that it makes it so that students don't have to be in the traffic of other students going to their buses, while this may be easier, that doesn't make it right. This sets up staff, students, and parents' perception of students in the center programs as different and less than. It also does not allow students the dignity of risk that allows them to learn how to function in crowded situations. Finally, I'd like to ask the board a couple of questions about the Western Wayne Skills Center. Anyone involved in special education knows that the research is overwhelming, that students receiving special education services perform best and learn more when they are with their typical same-age peers. Since the Skills Center is not being renovated with bond money, even though it is one of the oldest buildings and has multiple structural and other issues, when will notification of the building closing go out to the public? Also, which vocational technical schools and/or colleges are going to be used for the education of students who are currently in the Skills Center? Livonia Public Schools needs to shine its beacon for all students, including those receiving special education. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a response to prior audience communications, to which we do not have any at this time. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item Four, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Five A, minutes of the regular meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Five B, minutes of the special meeting of November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Five C, minutes of the closed session of November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Six A, bills for payment, December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Six B, approval of resolution for summer tax collection.
Support. I believe, I heard several. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments from board members before we vote on this item? I'm sorry. Go back. Okay.
Yes, Mrs. McDonald. I would like to make a mention and reference to the summer tax collection. In our bills for payment today, the district had to write a check to the City of Livonia for two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents to process our tax bills and collect the money, and the City of Westland charges us zero. So the board needs to really get into the city and emphasize to them that they need to adjust that figure a lot, and if they are going to charge us that amount of money, we need to have an explanation as to the cost breakdown and why. And also, they collect taxes for other entities, the Zoo Village, the county, the arts. Do they charge them the same? Something for the board to go after, and same with the community. It's a lot of money. Thank you.
Are there any, are there any other questions or comments from board members? No? All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Six D, Approval of Resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Board members, please pass down your closed session minutes. The next item on our agenda is Six D, Approval of Resolution to Authorize the Issuance and Sale of Bonds. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District approve the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, delegation of the sale of bonds, and other matters relating thereto, including the authorization of the superintendent to execute necessary documents and agreements.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this item for us?
Thank you very much. Yes, good evening. We did have an opportunity to talk about this at our Finance Committee meeting last week, but as the board knows, we have voter-approved bonds for a hundred-and-ninety-five million dollars. That was approved by our voters, thank you, again, in May of two thousand and thirteen. And we are issuing those bonds in two series. We sold the first series in June of two thousand and thirteen, so that cash was deposited into a separate account and allowed us to begin the process of our renovations of schools. As we talked about at that time, it is appropriate to issue the bonds in two series for a couple of reasons. One is relative to timeframe for reporting and spending of bond dollars. Generally, from a big picture, eighty-five percent needs to be spent within about three years. So as you know, this is a, at least a five-year bond project, so we would not be able to meet that target if we had issued all of the bonds upfront. Additionally, by moving some of the bonds into a second series, that also helps pay a little bit less interest, which is good for our taxpayers, so we keep the millage rates down a little bit from, and where we had anticipated they would be when we did ask the voters to approve this. So what you have before you this evening is the necessary documents and resolution that will allow the district to actually go out into the market and sell the bonds, and this will be eighty-seven million, fifty thousand dollars of bonds, and that does make up the second half to reach the hundred-and-ninety-five million dollars. This process, the authorization tonight will allow us to start the process, get the paperwork going, and then we should be done in February, assuming the market is good and that everything lines correctly, we should be done the end of February, and again, deposit those funds so we can use those for the remaining projects. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we had a nice, long chat about this at our committee meeting, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any further questions other than those that were asked at the last week's meeting? No? All right. No further questions? We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Six D, Approval of Agreement for Building Utilization Assessment and Prioritization of Bond Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to enter into an agreement for the building utilization assessment and prioritization of bond projects on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education. First-phase study enrollment projection will cost fifteen thousand dollars, and the second-phase study, building utilization assessment and facilitation, will cost forty-five thousand dollars for a total of, a cost of sixty thousand dollars.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you again. Again, this was an item that we had an opportunity at our finance, Building and Site Meeting last week, or Committee as a whole, to have a long discussion on, so. But we are presenting a proposal tonight from Plant Moran Crusoe to provide a study of enrollment of building utilization in order to assist the district with prioritization of bond projects. So you just heard me talk about the fact that we're selling the second series of bonds, and we are moving on with our continued bond projects and planning. Throughout the bond planning, the board has asked administration to consider the capacity of our schools as we make decisions. We are looking to get detailed information that we need to make data-driven decisions as we plan the remaining bond projects. We have discussed the proposal and the purpose of the study at several meetings, including our last committee meeting, and Plant Moran Crusoe had an opportunity at that meeting to provide some detailed information, and we will invite them back up in a couple of minutes to go over that again. But again, we did have an opportunity for you to ask a lot of discussions of administration and of Plant Moran Crusoe at that time. So I'll provide a little bit of background, and then again, I'll invite Paul Terrio from Plant Moran back to the podium. So as you know, we have been doing long-term facility planning, is an ongoing process in Livonia Public Schools, and the planning for the bond projects started in two thousand and eleven. At that time, decisions were made based on the data we collected, including enrollment projections and anticipated building use and building capacity. Similar to trends across the county and the state, the district has experienced enrollment shift for many years. Simply put, there are less children entering kindergarten than we have seniors graduating. As we look at Livonia's data over the last, since the bond planning started, since the inception of the bond planning, we have had change of fifteen hundred students in Livonia Public Schools since that time. In order to be fiscally responsible with bond funds, we don't want to make assumptions about future trends. Therefore, we do believe it's prudent to revisit our building capacity at this time, which, as we've discussed, is about midway through our bond projects and our bond planning. The study we're asking Plant Moran to complete will update our enrollment data, which will provide us data for our buildings going forward by location. And the second part of the study will be looking at the building utilization assessment and to assist the district in analyzing that data. They will also help us facilitate a stakeholders committee that will be working to analyze that data as well. So again, what we're looking at is a two-phase study. One is to look at our enrollment trends for the next several years, going, and Paul will talk about this in a little more detail, by going back seven years, looking at data, looking at live birth datas, and they have some other processes to look at our enrollment, and then we will also be looking at our building capacity, so by location, so we'll have by each of our boundary areas that data is, which will help us, again, be data-driven. We are recommending Plant Moran for this work. We do believe they have the most expertise in this area, as well as a thorough knowledge of Livonia Public Schools. As you know, they're our owner's rep, as well as working on our sinking fund planning. If they haven't walked every building, I'd be surprised. I think they've been pretty much through every building. They know a lot about, not just our schools, but our programs, and what we're doing in the district, and what our plans are, and what kind of our hopes and dreams are. So they've been working with us for quite a while. In addition, we've had an opportunity to see some of the work they've done in other districts, the reporting that they've done, the data analysis, the huge binder of, you know, incredible detail of data as it relates to enrollment data and capacity, and we've been impressed by both the volume, the quantity, and the thoroughness of what they've done. So we are pleased to recommend Plant Moran to complete the two-phase study for us going forward. And with that, I would like to invite Paul back up to the podium, if you would, and you've got a handout in front of you that Paul is going to briefly go through, a little more detail, the scope of work, and what expertise that Plant Moran brings to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbey.
Good evening.
So as, good evening. Congratulations, Ms. Oquist. Fun event, and that's, that is the most packed I've seen this room in a long time. So obviously, we covered a lot of this last Monday, but I did want to just kind of give an overview of what the assignment would be for us. The first phase would be an enrollment projection study. We'd really be looking back at your last seven years of enrollment data and using that to project five years into the future. The reason it's five years is because the children that haven't been born yet are hard to cohort through the system to figure out how they're going to matriculate, I guess. We would look a lot at the birth rate data that we would get from the state of Michigan on Wayne County. We'd look at individual school boundaries and feeder patterns, so who feeds from the lower elementaries to the upper, to the middle schools, to the high schools, and what does that look like? There's also a lot of historical and nonhistorical factors that we look at, and we gather those through some demographic software that we subscribe to called Esri. A lot of our corporate clients use that when they're trying to figure out where to put new branches or new locations or new, you know, big-box retail-type places. So that really lets us get very specific and drill down street by street by street in order to draw those boundaries around each school, to figure out which schools are declining enrollment, which ones are growing, what other ones might have the opportunity to grow in the future as development takes place. So that really lets us get very specific. And then we were planning timeline-wise to be able to have that enrollment projection study done and presented to the board in early two thousand and sixteen. We're thinking either late February or March would kind of be the timeline. I did bring one of those gigantic finders that everybody loves. This is a recent study that we did for Rochester Schools. It's a draft copy, but if anyone was interested in coming through it, I would bring it.
A little light reading, huh?
A little light reading, yeah. Phase two of the assignment would be the building utilization assessment and facilitation. We'd really be looking at doing a lot of different things, as Ms. Abbey mentioned, touring all the facilities again, which we are very familiar with. Walking through them this time, we'd be looking at it a little bit differently. We'd be looking more at programs in those buildings, the size of the classrooms, code concerns that might prohibit or allow different programs to be moved in and out of those spaces, building capacities, and then other site-specific factors, as far as, you know, what are they adjacent to, what would bus drop off, and student-parent drop off, visitor parking, things like that that could affect the flow of those buildings when they have more or less students and different programs in them. We'd also be looking at grade configurations, class sizes, contractual limitations that the district has. We'd obviously want to sit down and meet with district staff, that's a very important piece of it, and administration, so we'd want to talk through the users of those spaces to understand what some of their specific needs are, the needs of their programs, and talk through, you know, different scenarios with them. And then we'd obviously want to integrate those two reports, so integrate the enrollment projection with- projection with the building utilization study to understand what the dynamics are within the district. We'd also like to finish that report along the same time, probably sometime in March, so we can bring those together and report back to the Board in March. And then the last portion would be to facilitate a committee to kind of analyze the data that's been put together, talk through it, and try to figure out what the next steps may be for the district. Any questions about that at all?
Questions from the Board.
I know we covered it in detail before, but...
Questions from Board members?
I do.
Mrs. McDonald?
I thank you, President Burton. Paul, I know when you were here for our committee meeting, we talked about the time, timing on getting this report back to us and our next scheduled summer project. Timing isn't going to be there, apparently. The thing that bothers me is that we are going to basically be three-quarters of the way through our bond projects, and then that's going to leave us one-quarter of our schools to really be analyzed for use after we spent millions of dollars otherwise, so...
I know we're...
Help me here.
I know we're bringing this to you now, but since the first day we were hired, we've been having conversations along these lines, right? What schools are we going to go after first, which one's second, which one's third? And we've tried to keep in mind all along that, you know, these are public dollars. We want to be very careful with how they're spent. We want to make sure we think through everything very thoroughly. So with regards to next year's construction projects, ideally, we would want to start design in probably April, but that's not necessarily the deadline for when we would want to start that. The first summer, if you think about it, we didn't hire the architects till July, so we had a little bit more condensed schedule, and that was the first summer when we were really up against, you know, putting the team together, putting the district standards together, not knowing exactly how that process was going to go and how the firms would react. This being, would be the third summer, I think we have a little bit more, or actually be the fourth summer, of design. I think we have a little bit more trust in those parties, and I think we could condense the design schedule quite a bit if we needed to. So I think if this report were to come back and say that we need to take a breath and think through things a little bit more carefully, I think we do have the time to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions or comments from other Board members?
I had another slide. Go ahead.
Okay. One question I wanted to ask.
Sure.
The district has done this kind of analysis on its own over many, many, many years, not even just over bond years, but, you know, quite a bit prior to that. Tell me how this is going to be different than what the district has the capability to do?
Sure. So Plant Moran Cressa is one of four firms that's recognized by the Michigan Department of Treasury to do enrollment projections. So we do have a lot of experience putting those together. Over the last five years, we've been over ninety-nine percent accurate in those enrollment projections, so I think that speaks for itself. The fact that we do subscribe to some of those demographic software programs that I mentioned, where we're able to go through and draw boundaries street by street around schools and do not just enrollment projections district-wide, but do them building by building, I think that will lend quite a bit to that as well. I mentioned a lot last Monday about perspective. So we've done a lot of similar studies for a lot of your neighboring districts and a lot of the larger school districts in the state, which are all experiencing very similar dynamics to what you guys are. Just to name a few, we've done a recent study for Plymouth Canton Schools, Farmington Public Schools, South Lion, Wald Lake, Birmingham, Rochester, Warren, Ann Arbor. So we've done a lot of these. We really do have a good idea of how to put this report together and what goes into it, and can lend a lot of perspective to what your neighbors and other districts in the state are going through and doing, and how they've solved those challenges. Experience, I mean, we've, Plant Moran's been in business for about ninety years, Plant Moran Cressa over twenty, so, and we really specialize in the K-12 market, so it's a big part of our practice, so we really try to focus on that sector. Paul Wills was hoping to be here tonight, but believe it or not, he's at another school board meeting, so that kind of tells you all you need to know, I guess. Independence, so obviously, being attached to an accounting firm, independence is always at the top of our minds, so we're only advocating for the district and no one else, so I wanted to make sure you knew that. We also, as Ms. Abby mentioned, have a very, I think, a good leg up, the fact that we've been through your buildings, that we're managing the bond, managing the sinking fund. We really do have a good idea of what programs are where, and have thought through a lot of that, and how those pieces could move around if need be. Obviously, we're right down the street in Southfield. I'm probably upstairs in Conference Room B four to five days a week, so we're not very far away, and we're ready to begin. We actually have had some great growth the last few years. We're up to over seventy staff, I just found out this morning. I was always saying sixty-five, but turn your head and there's a couple more people hired. So we have a team of about five people that we're going to dedicate to this. Paul Wills will kind of lead the endeavor. Myself and Scott Smith would be helping Paul, and then we have Krista Jarno and Jessica Zanetti, who do a lot of our enrollment projections, a lot of the demographics, a lot of the work behind the scenes to make everything come together. So we are absolutely ready and willing to go, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Any other Board members? Mr. Centers?
So I just want to comment that I am definitely in support of this measure. I think, one, we, every year, we make budget projections, and Ms. Abby does a great job of crossing her fingers and guessing how many kids we may have or may not have, and we try to do everything we can to get the most students involved, but that is certainly an art, and we do a lot of budgeting based on that, and a lot of decisions are based on that. This past year, we were not very close to our projection, and, you know, that certainly has a big impact on our budget going forward. That's part of why this is so important. Another part is that we, and I think Ms. Burton put this correctly in our Committee of the Whole, our staff is here to educate kids. To go through twenty-some buildings and really give an outside look, outside perspective, an honest opinion of, you know, where, what we should do going forward to best utilize that, take out, you know, the personal biases and favorites we all have here, and really hear, you know, an outside perspective, I think is going to be very valuable, and I think it's going to help us make really good decisions going forward. So that's just my opinion, that's why I support it. And I think it's going to be a, it's going to help us with the budgeting process, be more accurate, and just have better-informed decisions.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the Board? Mrs. Oakwest, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. So on the second page, and Mr. Terrio went through what Plant Moran brings to this process in comparison to either another company or us doing this alone, I really wanted to emphasize that their expertise and accuracy is something that was essential to our team. We really feel like it's important that we get this right, and we know that it's important of the highest priority for the Board and our district administration to be good stewards of our resources. And in order to do that, we feel that we have to have extraordinarily accurate data that gives us a deep look at our enrollment trends moving forward, not just by district and by level, but by actual attendance and boundary area. And we have had the opportunity to review those binders, as well as the presentations that Mr. Wills and Mr. Terrio have made in other districts, and we are very, very confident in their work. And just to be clear, the administration will be working, and our staff will be working very, very closely with them. This will not be a project that they will embark on on their own, although they will do this initial study. When we come together, our team of stakeholders will be the voice in that room, representing, again, the historical perspective of our district, with the expertise and that third-party knowledge that Plant Moran is bringing. So we think this partnership will be very, very helpful to us with some very important decisions ahead for us.
Thank you.
We would recommend moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this item? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Thank you, President Burton. I know one of the comments that was made early in our current discussion was that, you know, we were talking about being good stewards of the bond dollars. I fear that that's sort of an oversimplification for the public. There are far-reaching reasons that we can utilize this, these enrollment numbers for and utilize this study. You know, we need to move not only confident, forward confidently with bond dollars, we also have sinking fund dollars that we need to deal with. Another issue that we can utilize the study for is student enrollment, to know how many students are in each of those schools, so that we can, you know, keep our numbers down and not get into, stuck into a situation where we have to have a full classroom because we don't have enough kids in a building to split, or be able to know ahead of time what those enrollment projections are going to be. So I think there's a lot of far-reaching attributes to this study that go far beyond just being good stewards of bond dollars.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the Board? Seeing then, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, please take the roll.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item, and thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate your attendance tonight and your information. The next item on our agenda is item six E, acceptance of Yo and Yo Audit Report for the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the fiscal year 2015 audit report for the 2013 bond as presented by the audit firm Yo and Yo.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item for us?
Yes, I did thank everyone who was here tonight for this report, but it seems that's not true.
Yes.
The, we are pleased tonight to bring forward the annual report and audit and financial statements for the 2013 bond. We do have a bond theme this evening. As you know, the bond work, financials, need to be audited either at the end of the project, at the end of the, in our case, five-year project, or when it's substantially complete, or you can audit the bond funds as you go through the projects. Typically, that would be done in conjunction with your financial audit each year, but as you know, Plant Moran is our financial auditor, and Plant Moran Cressa, who while very independent, is our owner's representative, and while certainly there would be nothing illegal or immoral about having Plant Moran do the audit work, when we talked about it with the Board of Education, Plant Moran recommended, and we agree, that it probably made the most sense to have an independent, separate auditor from Plant Moran. So that's why this didn't come forward with our regular financial audit, and why we're bringing it to the Board of Education separately. So we did go out for bid and hired Yo and Yo to do that work. They have done our financial audits in the past, and we're very familiar with them, and they do a very nice job. Mr. Brian Dixon, their principal, was here at our Finance Committee last week to go through those financial statements in detail. You have in your packet this evening the audit opinion letter, the financial statements, as well as the letter on internal controls. We did receive an unmodified or unqualified opinion, which is the highest level an auditor can give. That means they found no problems and no issues. That's how they say it. They don't, they say it in the un-way, but it is the highest level of assurance that the auditing firm can provide us. In addition, they looked at our internal controls and also find that there were no problems with our internal controls as well. And again, provided, that letter provides the highest level of compliment that they can give to the district on internal controls. So you have those in front of you. We are on target. You'll know that these are through June 30th, 2015. We've recently put on the quarterly report, and they are not always in, we keep the quarterly report up to date, whereas the financial statement report is back to the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, 2015. You'll recall, of course, that every quarter, we do reconcile our financials with the same records that Plant Moran Cressa are keeping on their books, and make sure we have the exact same numbers, and we do. So we have that confirmation each quarter, look at our financials each quarter, and then we have the annual audit as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the actual financial statements or audit opinion letters.
Are there any questions from Board members on the audit? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Abby, just to clarify, in case we go back to check our June 30th numbers, the financial statements are on the accrual basis, and our quarterly reports are on the cash basis, correct?
Correct, so they will never match exactly, correct. So for example, if you remember, we pointed out last week, a large liability of around eight million dollars in these financial statements. That means money that we owed contractors, basically, for work completed through June 30th. Cash won't go out until July, August, September. You've seen those in the bills for payment, but they, the expenditure would have been included in this June 30th financial report. That's correct. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Board?
I just want to reiterate a comment from last week. Lisa, Abby, and her whole office does a fantastic job in the business office. The amount of transactions that they take, that happens through that office is incredible. I've never seen anything but unmodified or unconditional report, however you want to put it. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work there.
Thank you.
It's impressive, and it's credit, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? All right. Seeing then, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, please take the roll.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item six F, approval of bid results for physical education equipment. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of physical education equipment from Exercise Warehouse, Livonia, Michigan, for a total cost of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, I'm sorry, by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. Upon recommendation from our administrator of the Carol M. White Physical Education Program Grant, we did put together a bid for exercise equipment, additional exercise equipment for the three high schools. You have the results of that bid in your packet this evening. The firm that was the lowest responsible bidder that won, met all of our specifications, and bid on all of the equipment, is Exercise Warehouse here in Livonia for fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifteen cents. We have used Exercise Warehouse before and been very happy with what they've provided, so we would recommend we move forward with that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the Board? The only thing I'd like to point out is this is from the PEP grant. This is not from our general funds.
Correct.
This must be spent on these types of items and cannot be spent on teachers, books, et cetera.
Yes, that's correct. This is a federal grant.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing then, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, you take the role, please.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item six G, approval to purchase mobile media carts 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education purchase fifty-two mobile media carts from Troxel Communications Incorporated for the technology-related items at the cost of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents, and DCP Solutions for the hardware items at the cost of forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents. The total cost for this purchase is one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eighty-three dollars and eight cents.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson, and Ms. Abby or Ms. Alice, which one of you would like to take this item?
That would be me. Thank you, Mrs. Burton, President Burton. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I thought I would summarize some of the key points that were presented and discussed with the Board of Education during the Committee of the Whole Meeting last Monday night relative to the motion that you have before you. Last Monday, I reminded the board that last spring, we approved the purchase of document cameras and interactive projectors for installation in all of our classrooms following the construction schedule. As we began to install these technology tools in our schools, it became evident to us that these technology tools were not a good match for our elementary LMCs because of the configuration of the room and how the room is used for instructing students on a weekly basis. We did find an alternative to the document camera and interactive projector, and that is the mobile media cart. And Nick, if you could put that photo on the, on the screen, there we go. So this is the mobile media cart. It has a 65-inch LED TV that's mounted on a fully adjustable cart, a wireless keyboard and mouse, a Chrome box that runs Chrome OS, an HD camera for video conferencing, and the system also allows for expandability, so we can add such things as a DVD or Blu-ray player, Apple TV, Chromecast, or external speakers. We are recommending that we purchase 52 of the mobile media carts. This will allow us to provide each of our LMCs with one mobile media cart that the LMC specialist will use for providing instruction to the classes that the LMC specialist meet with on a weekly basis. We're also asking that a second mobile media cart be added to each elementary school and that two mobile media carts be added to each secondary school. And the additional media carts will be used by staff members in planning professional development sessions, in planning PowerPoints for school improvement presentations, or parent meeting presentations. They can also be used by teams to project information for IEPs, EPTs, and other parent meetings where information is needed to be displayed. They also can be used by groups of teachers who want to bring their students together in the community room and display information. They can be used for so many different purposes because of their portability. And I know last week, the board asked for us to compare the price of the interactive projector to, and the document camera, to the cost of the mobile media cart, and the prices are fairly comparable. So the benefit of having the mobile media carts is that it allows us to move the carts, then, from conference room to conference room or from conference room to the community rooms. So the total cost for the 52 mobile media carts is $133,083.8. And funds for this purchase will come from the original budgeted amount for our classroom technology, which is part of the 2013 bond. As mentioned, we are recommending the two vendors that are in the motion, and because we are using RMC pricing, we do not require any additional bids. And so we do recommend that the board approve the motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the board? I know we had some extensive discussion last week. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that this is a way to bring appropriate technology into parts of our school that are not classrooms, such as community rooms and LMCs. We've been focusing a lot on improving the technology in our classrooms, which is right and good, but there are other rooms in the schools that can also make use of technological advancement, and I'm happy to see that we're not neglecting those areas.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing then, thank you, Mrs. Alice. We appreciate your information.
You're very welcome.
And the detailed discussion we had at the last meeting. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 6H, Approval of Change Order for Inacom TSG Contract for Computer Workstations 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached change order to Inacom Technical Services Group for 330 additional computers in the amount of $320,932 using available contingency funds.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. And Ms. Abby or Mrs. Alice?
That would be me again.
Alrighty.
Thank you, President Burton. Once again, I'll summarize some of the key points that we shared and discussed at last Monday's Committee of the Hall meeting relative to the motion that you have before you. We are making a recommendation to, for a change order to Inacom to allow us to purchase 330 additional computers for two purposes. One, it's to expand the mini labs that we have in our K-4 schools to full computer labs, and two, to allow us to purchase some desktop computers for our, some of our student services staff members. You may remember last February, the board approved the awarding of a contract to Inacom Technical Services Group to purchase computers to replace existing teacher workstations, to replace computers in our computer labs, and to replace the computer in the LMC. Well, as we began our spring testing last year, we realized that the full computer lab and the mini lab that are in our current K-4 schools is not sufficient enough to handle all of the testing requirements and still allow time for teachers to bring their classes to the computer labs to use the computers to teach computer skills. So we need to expand in each of our K-4 schools, the mini lab to a full-size lab with 34 computers. Thus, each K-4 school will have, then, two full computer labs to use for testing. And the installation of the computers in our schools and the K-4 schools will follow the construction project schedule, so Phase 1 and Phase 2 schools will have two computer labs for the start of spring testing this coming spring, and then Phase 2, Phase 3 and Phase 4 will follow construction. And then they will have two full computer labs in the K-4 schools. Additionally, we identified some student services personnel who, through the first round of teacher replacement computers, did not computer, get replacement computers, and we need to provide them with a replacement computer. So to accomplish both of these, we need 330 additional computers, as well as keyboards, mice, and monitors. The total cost is $320,932, and this is based on Inacom's original unit bid price to us, and it is for the same computer, so it's the original computer award, which is a Hewlett-Packard Elite Desktop with Intel Core and a 21.5-inch monitor with a webcam and a speaker bar. We recommend purchasing these computers using the contingency funds available through the original contract that was awarded to Inacom last year. The original contract amount was $3,283,715 with a $328,371 contingency, and the funds needed for the additional 330 computers falls within the available contingency funds. So we do recommend that the board approve the motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Questions or comments? No? Alrighty. Thank you again for the detailed information. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item 7A, Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment to the teacher listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item for us?
Yes, thank you. This teacher has completed the application, interview, and selection process for this position. We believe this person to be the most qualified person for the position to which they were selected, and we recommend that the board approve their employment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Mr. Winery, this salary that's listed here, is that based on an annual salary or the .9 salary?
It's not only, it's based on the .9 salary and the balance of the academic year remaining.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, thanks for that concern.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing then, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Alphonse DePaolo, Rodney Foster, and Linda Preston.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Sorry. Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item for us, please?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have three employees for your approval of resolutions for appreciation. You may recognize Mr. Paolo as the principal of the Career Center, and Mr. Foster as a teacher, and
What's your main station?
I'm sorry, did I say career? I meant Skill Center. I apologize for that. And Rodney Foster is a teacher, and Linda Preston is a paraprofessional. Their total service is over 60 years of service with the district. On behalf of administration, I want to thank those employees for their many years of service and their dedication, and we recommend that the board adopt the resolutions of appreciation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Education? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Um, I, all teachers are deserving of a thank you, but I just want to thank Mr. Foster publicly. He had a huge impact on one of my sons, and I'm very sad that he's not going to be there to have the same impact on my second child, but he's been an outstanding teacher and really had a huge impact, not only on my son, but my family. So thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis?
While I would be kind of redundant here, but Mr. Foster had a great impact on my daughter as well, and to his credit, I just want to mention that he is a global expert on northern long-eared bats. So if you ever need to know anything about those particular bats, I'm sure he'll still make himself available.
I'm sure that he will. My kid's going to attest to the same. Any other comments from the Board of Education? Yes, no? Yeah, alrighty. We, seeing then, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Oh, boy. I'm sorry, I was so emotionally distraught that Mr. Foster's retiring. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 8, Instruction Matters. 8A, Recommend Expulsion of One Secondary Student. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District expel one Churchill High School student, grade 12, for serious violations of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education policies.
Support.
Is that Mrs. McDonald or Mrs. Jarvis?
Mrs. McDonald?
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Archibald, would you like to address this item?
Just to remind the board, there was a hearing held, and it is a recommendation of the hearing officer, supported by the administration, for this expulsion.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Just want to thank Mr. Archibald. I know you do this every time, and we don't always thank you, but you're taking time out of your personal, your pers, sometimes your personal time when we don't get back to you right away, for taking the time to speak to each and every board member directly about these incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing then, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is hearing from the superintendent, Mrs. Oakus.
Thank you.
It sounds nice to drop the interim off there.
Thank you so much. I will be brief, but first, I'm thrilled to be reporting to you as the superintendent of Livonia Public Schools. Last Friday evening, I had the privilege, along with all of you, to attend the inauguration of our new mayor, our city clerk, our city treasurer, and four council members. It really was a wonderful evening, and there was a very positive energy in the room, so we wish good luck to our colleagues across Farmington Road, who will be embarking on their new adventure, led by new mayor Dennis Wright. Of course, the evening also included an acknowledgement of Mayor Kirksey, who is completing his service, to not only the city of Livonia, but who has been a longtime partner of Livonia Public Schools. So we wish them all the best. A quick congratulations to our middle school robotics teams. They held their first competition. We now have, you may know, robotics teams at each of our middle schools. They held their first competition a couple of weeks ago at Frost Middle School. Over 30 schools and districts attended, and you would have been so proud of our students. They did an amazing job. Their minds are, go in so many different directions, and I was just wowed by their efforts. And I also wanted to comment how many mentors, both parents and business partners, they have to assist them. So finally, the district has a busy week ahead. We have still a lot of learning going on. I know many students are on the countdown, but we look at it as four additional days of opportunities to learn, but we also know there will be many celebrations and concerts, and I look forward to stopping in at our schools during the day and the evening to attend. We always enjoy those opportunities to celebrate what is best about Livonia Public Schools, and that is our students and staff. So we wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a wonderful holiday, and look forward to an outstanding 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a hearing from board members. Item A, Second Reading of Board Policy. BD1, Formulation of Bylaws. Item B is Second Reading of Board Policy. BD2, Formulation of Policies. And Item C is Second Reading of Board Policy. BDA, Policy Development System. May I, let me see here. Mrs. Oakus, could you address all three of these policies, and then we'll take them individually for a vote, please? They are all intertwined.
I certainly will. Just again, very briefly, BD1, BD2, and BDA are intended to provide clarity of practice with regard to the dissolution of a board policy or bylaw. You may recall, last month, we collapsed, for instance, three of our policies into two. In doing so, we were able to delete one policy. We took the contents of that policy and incorporated it into one of the others. However, there was not a clear practice for doing so, and so you will note, in BD1, we added some verbiage to the second and third paragraph with regard to that process. In BD2, I believe we literally added just a couple of words that talked about not only proposing changes to a policy, but we added the ability to recommend deletion of a policy, and then keeping track of those deleted policies. Finally, in BDA, we added just the phrase "policy dissolution" to the second paragraph to join those other amended ways that we amend the bylaws of the board. So again, it really is a clarification of process within our policies, and we would recommend moving forward with these.
Thank you. Taking the first item, Second Read, Reading of Board Policy. BD1, Formulation of Bylaws. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following. BD1, Formulation of Bylaws.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is the Second Reading of Board Policy, BD2, Formulation of Policies. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following. BD2, Formulation of Policies.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have the motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The item C is Second Reading of Board Policy, BDA, Policy Development System. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for the following. BDA, Policy Development System.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda this evening is hearing from board members. As has become customary for our Board of Education, rather than having seven of us repeat the same thing largely seven times, we ask one board member to cover most of those duties for us at each meeting. Tonight, we'll be hearing from Mr. Centers. If afterward, if any other board members would like to add anything, they're certainly welcome to do so. Mr. Centers?
Well, thank you. It's certainly an honor and such a special night to be able to speak for the Board of Education. First, I would like to thank the American Cancer Society for coming by and acknowledging all the hard work of our students. $30,000 raised for cancer research is amazing, and it was very nice of them to acknowledge that, and it's great of our students to put that effort forth. And plus, they gave us some cool bling to display. We had some great student artwork. This month, it was from Churchill. It's really fantastic and impressive. Again, I wish I had that kind of skill set. We appointed a new superintendent, something that hasn't been done in well over a decade. Normally, I may be running in as the meeting started, and I always usually have my premium spot right up front, usually right by the door. Tonight, I was quite early, and I had to park so far away that I found a new parking lot in the back of our property I didn't even know existed. That's how many people are excited about Mrs. Oakwist as superintendent.
No shuttle service either.